Such a big crowd, I need to use the hammer. Match. Hey, we are ready to start. First thing would be to adopt our agenda.
Okay, I move to adopt the now consolidated agenda for the Select Board Cannabis Commission, Liquor Commission, and I think we have Seward tonight, but that would also be part of it. As Ward.
Second.
Motion and a second on the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on. Select Board remarks. A typical remark, which I don't think we have to say too much, but such a small crowd, but we want to be nice and polite to everybody. For those who did pull up an agenda online or look at it, this is a new way we're going to attack some of this. When the Select Board meets every March and reorganizes, we name the Select Board as the Boards for not only the Town Select Board, but for liquor, or cannabis, or...
Seward.
Seward.
And the Board of Health.
And the Board of Health. So each time in the past when we do this, we end up with totally separate agendas, and we have to make motions to open and close and get Brian to give us the adjourn and whatever, and it's so much easier to just put this all together because we are the board that's going to do all of those. So if this goes well this evening, maybe better than having to have to follow our names out every time we were speaking. We've gotten over that hurdle. This is the way it will be presented from now on. And also where we don't have the Recording Secretary now, it's easier to do all these together in one giant thing. So anyone else have any opening remarks? Unheard. So, moving on to item three. Three is a for all the recurring matters.
I will move that we move items three A through three H to a consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Okay, through three A to three H is cannabis, liquor, some liquor permits that Sue has already done for different events in town, the warning and everything that we usually go flying right through. So makes sense to do it this way.
So the points are on this list, so if anyone has questions about those, this would be the time.
Yep.
Okay.
So, questions from the board on this or discussion? If not, all in favor of consent for A through H and doing that all in one shot? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one? We are done. A to H.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Can I just confirm who was the second on that?
Jeff moved it, right?
And I was...
You said, thank you.
Okay. Item four on our agenda is a request for a letter of support from Joan Allen regarding the sale of a swamp lot to State.
I move we approve that. Make a motion to approve that request. We've had good luck with them before and we don't need to waste her time.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve a letter.
Just, Mr. Chair, just to note that Joan Allen is present by Zoom if you do have questions, but yes, this is something that Brandon's had success with in the past.
Okay. Does anyone want to ask any questions? I think we've done this a number of times.
I think it's a great idea. I like that it leaves it open to future generations with the uses that it's been to and, you know, can serve open land, which we are getting less and less of.
And the town still gets the taxes from them.
Sounds...
Okay. All, a favor of having Mr. Hopkins send a letter of support. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one?
Thank you, Joan, for being here.
Thank you, Joan.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your support.
We tried to make it as easy as possible for you.
You certainly did. Thank you. Good night.
Okay, now, reports to the Select Board. First one would be Town Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board, members of the public. I submitted my report ahead. I won't repeat anything from it, but I do have a fairly long list of updates I'd like to share with the community. There's at least one for each of the four big areas of work that the town does. So in the Public Works, I have got a spot on the agenda for the Sudbury Select Board. I'll be going over there next Monday about a suggestion that our Town Highway Division Chief had made that we might post some covered bridge signage of ours in Sudbury where there's a good place for a truck to turn around before they get into Brandon. So I'm going to go over there and ask them what they think about that to try to avoid trucks. Most of the times the covered bridge has been hit or damaged, it's been trucks coming at Brandon from Route 30 side.
So are they turning onto Burr Pond Road and...
So, right, maybe as far out as there, but certainly at where Burr Pond would turn onto Long Swamp was his, which is kind of just over the line.
Right, okay.
He has also increased the tree watering for the young trees that have been planted. It's been increased to every other day. We started off with an instruction from the nursery we bought the trees from to water once a week that maybe was insufficient for the kind of summer we're having. I just would note that that is a three-hour time commitment of one of the Town Highway Crew members to load the tank, drive it around town, load the bags around the trees, get it back, that kind of thing. So I think they're doing it Monday, Wednesday, Friday now. In Public Safety, some good news. Chief Kachajian conducted a formal interview with a candidate for the lieutenant's position, which we previously had not had candidates for. And today I participated in a Front Porch Forum training about deploying Front Porch Forum in emergencies, and it highlighted that it would be good for the community to be aware that our local emergency management plan, which the board has adopted every year and renewed every year, it actually designates what we're going to use for platforms to get the word out during an emergency. And our designated platforms are Front Porch Forum, the Vermont Alert System, the town's opt-in text messaging system, and the town's website. So that's where you would expect to get official information from the town in a timely way in the event of an emergency. There was a lot in administration and finance that happened either Friday or today. I got a lot of work done with the town's professional assessor regarding the criteria that we should incorporate into our request for proposals for the upcoming townwide reappraisal. Just to advise the board, often in June or July, there's been requests for encumbrances or assignments of funds. The town's professional staff has no requests to assign funds from FY25 into FY26. It will make things simpler when we go to budget planning. And this is also good news. I would highlight the town treasurer's successful migration of the town's operating bank accounts and the fact that her management of these accounts has earned the town $61,626 in bank interest in fiscal year '25. That figure...
Yeah, I know that. I was very pleased.
This figure represents very nearly 2% of the total spending in the town's FY25 operating budget of $3,328,81. This is not the delinquent tax interest. This is just bank interest on our funds that we keep for operations. And I'm providing a second page to the board, which is an updated FY25 budget summary. This came also from the town treasurer. I was not sure it was ripe to be delivered, but she believes so. So she's credited delinquent taxes collected since the close of FY25, which would be delinquent taxes received by the town in July, and she's projected the payments that are projected to be received through the end of August. That's the last date what FY25 money can still be credited to FY25, so two months after the close of the fiscal year. So the surplus that I reported in my published board packet on Thursday or Friday, whenever we got that done, was $52,534. The new projected FY25 surplus, which does rely on those August payments coming in as projected, is $121,818. So we've had a significant amount of delinquencies cleared. A lot of it, I will caution you, is the first payment of a payment plan, right? And time will tell whether the second payment comes in on time. And in the community development stuff, it's Bill's department, but I just wanted to congratulate Colleen Wright on a successful Brandon Carnival. It was safe. It was fun. It was free. It was my pleasure to be dunked yesterday, and it was my surprise that the people who lined up to dunk me were not Brandon residents.
Only because I didn't know that you were going to do it until you were already in the dunk tank and I didn't have time to get down there.
Well, there's always next year.
If we had known, we would have been there.
And we would have bought...
You're supposed to warn the 48 hours in advance.
I didn't know until the day we... So that's the end of my updates. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you for the update. I would also like to, one more time, thank the whole board for their work on the budget in the last, you know, when we've been doing this and the budget committees, because we really are hitting the targets that we're coming out with, and they're not just pie in the sky numbers. And it's good to get to the year end and not be looking at a deficit. So I think that's really kudos for the people working on that all the time. Next would be Community Development's report.
Thank you, Doug. This is my Community Development report today. First of all, I'd like to say that I was not at the carnival yesterday, so I did not get the opportunity to dunk Seth, and I'm disappointed by it. But Brandon Rec Fall offerings have been added to the website, brandrec.com. Adult Summer Coeds softball season is going to end on August the 17th. This has been a great and safe season thanks to the efforts of their league commissioner, Dakota Buska. This partnership will be back in 2026. It was nice having the adults there on Sunday from around nine to four. Helps keep the weeds down and it's adults using our facilities, which is nice. We're contacting multiple paving companies to provide a third quote for finishing the Esterbrook tennis-to-multi-use court project. Again, we've done the demo work as far as pulling up the old surface. It's getting a third quote from the busy paving companies that we can compare to bring back to the Select Board for approval. Fountain installation started today at Seminary Hill Park. The two fountains, the one on the playground side, the one on the dog park side are being installed along with the hose connection for watering purposes. There are six or seven trees between the dog park and Seminary Hill that require watering. If we have a water tap there, hose, it'll be, it'll cut down on that three-hour time for those trees. Next week is our last week with Youth Works Volunteers. As a reminder, everybody, Youth Works is a missionary organization that provides camp experiences for different churches throughout the country, mostly in the Northeast, and they pay to have Youth Works administer missions for them. So these kids will come from places like Bangor, Maine, or right near Scranton, Pennsylvania. They'll sleep on the floor of a church in a place that isn't Brandon and come and do work for us for free. And they're really great kids and their leadership's been fantastic, and this is our last week with them. They're going to be helping this week with the Seminary Hill Park work, spraying the bricks within the downtown for grass control, painting the floor of the Central Park gazebo, which is getting pretty tired, and Independence Day dedecorating. This has been, again, it's been a successful summer, and we're working to strengthen our partnership with them by 2026 and possibly hosting them for more weeks by trying to maybe connect them with local religious leaders, faith leaders, to see if they would want to potentially host them. Some upcoming Colleen Wright events that are going to be happening at Esterbrook Park, For the Love of Dogs Car Show is on August the 16th, and there's a waterslide day on August the 17th. An update on 317 North Street, the demolition is nearly complete. Richard Reed and Sons expect to have the seating finished by the end of this week. Okay. I didn't want to step on it, but he told me it'd be done by the end of the day Friday, but I just like to give people a week. Fantastic.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Also in our packet, we have a written report from Jack Snyder from the Planning Commission. We do ask that we get some feedback from our different groups during the year, and Jack is the first one to give us one. So it's there if anyone wants to read it. And so now we will take questions for the Town Manager and Community Development. Did you also not want to announce there's still the open positions we have?
I sure can, yeah. So in my published report, I did list at the top the current openings on Town Committees. There's a voting member opening on the Energy Committee. They meet the first Monday at 4:30 PM. There's a Planning Commission alternate opening. They meet the first Monday at 6:00 PM. Alternates attend and contribute and discuss at meetings. They vote in the absence of a voting member. There's also an alternate spot open on the Development Review Board. They meet the fourth Thursday at 7:00 PM to consider applications. And there are spots for consideration of the Select Board regarding the FY27 Budget Advisory Committee, which will probably meet the first and third Monday evenings.
Go for it.
If you want to apply to be considered by the Select Board for that committee, there is a request to have your application and letter of interest in by noon on Thursday of this week.
And I would note that for the two alternate positions, which are the Planning Committee and the Development Review Board, if you are serving as the alternate on one of those committees and one of the voting members resigns, the alternate does get first consideration for moving into that voting spot. So, you know, and also if a voting member isn't present to make a quorum, the alternate can then be a voting member for purposes of making a quorum. So for anyone that is wanting to get their foot in the door in a committee but isn't quite sure if they're ready to commit to being a voting member right now, those alternate positions are a good place to look.
Questions from the board for either Mr. Hopkins or Mr. Moore?
The Youth Works group, do they only do sort of town, like beautification, public property type things, or do they work with individual residents sometimes?
So, so going back to when they were a much more robust organization, I actually had a memory come across, a social media today showed it, seven years ago, having them do some work at Brandon Library. They, I think back when they had a larger presence, they would look often for people that might need a painting job at their house or something like that and don't have the ability to do that, and if they were supplied. But they've now just moved into partnering with organizations, like besides the Brandon Rec, they were partnered with New Story down in Rutland, Pine Hill Park doing work there, and the Chaffee Arts Center, I think, were some of the other locations that they were. So they primarily work with organizations to do those things.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Questions from the public for either Town Manager or Mr. Moore on his report? Brent Buehler?
Yes.
Brent Buehler. So this is a bit of a drumbeat, I know. One of Shirley Fars' bequests was for the trees in Brandon, and I know at the time they were Dutch Elms and they've all died, but we replanted. So perhaps some of the grant money could be used for spraying, pruning, fertilizing, and these are requests that could be made by the town or Neil, who doesn't X on job with our trees. So that's a thought, since I believe the trustees are having their initial meeting on Tuesday, August 12th. Time to be determined. So that's one thought. Second one is, I haven't been able to find anything on Act 181. It's B1, I think, is the plan for our area. Yeah, yeah. Is there someplace I need to look or go for that? And that's the Planning Commission, I know, but...
Right, so a great place would probably be the Rutland Regional Planning Commission's information on their website, which I think is rutlandrpc.org.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Quiet crowd. Moving on. Item six, request for local option tax to the balance of the town hall roof, which looks super...
Mr. Chair, may I? So in your packet, in the published packet, is a summary of the project. On the left columns, it talks about, at the top, the actual quote, the first quote was to reslate the roof, repoint the chimneys, and redeck the roof, and that was going to be $377,600. After that, when the work was begun, there were some change orders totaling $37,470, and those consisted of three items. There was a request to be a good neighbor by putting some snow guards on the west side of the building where we have a very close neighboring prop. We did that. There was the northwest chimney, which we were unsuccessful in finding just a brick company to rebuild for us at the time that it was blown down in a windstorm. And so Spardella Slate was happy to do that while they were up there, so to speak. And then there were several spaces where the deck of the building itself, like after the slate was off, the wooden structure that was the main deck of the roof, several places where there was rot there that had to be removed and something replaced. It was primarily around the chimneys and in the eaves, but there were some places in the field of the deck. If you look in the far, far right column, you'll see that in May, they did all the work on the east side at $3,360, $3,360. And then in June, when they moved to the west side, which as you know is the prevailing weather here, it was $8,385. So there was kind of more significant repairs required before they could put down the new surface and the snow guard, snow and ice guard and slate. So altogether, the accepted bid plus the extra work is $415,070. That matches what we have paid to Spardella, which is on the right-hand column. The middle column are the previous board votes. So the previous board votes were $266,345.38 from the town's ARPA award, and that basically represented everything that was not spent on other projects. That was the board's vote. Then the solar array proposal that was canceled because it was rejected by the voters, that had a $60,000 set aside, and $55,676.60 is returned to be able to be used for this. And then we did receive a $40,000 insurance settlement for the chimney being blown down. We elected to replace the boiler in this building, which we did. And so the net still available from that to put toward the chimney is $23,837.59. So the total of the board votes are $345,859.57, which leaves $69,210.43 as a gap to be met, and I recommend that the board meet that gap from the 1% fund. The 1% fund, as I stated in my report, has about $307,000 in it. And our previous, we will get a payment in August. Last year, our August payment was $76,420. The year before, our August payment was $67,038. So I would fully expect that the August payment will entirely make up what I'm asking you to designate tonight and return the 1% fund back to the position it's in tonight.
I just had one question. So we had in the contract to redeck the roof, and that was like parts of the roof that we knew needed to be redecked, and then we were planning on keeping other parts?
Oh.
And that's...
So what we had in the contract was the option to redeck the whole roof on both sides with new plywood.
Okay.
Over the existing wood.
Okay.
And that was the $36,800 number. But they didn't, they didn't run into a position where they could just do that. They had to do some prep work in some spots of the deck and around the eaves. And in fact, this is a great time to talk about the eaves. Many people have noticed that the slate does not go all the way down to on both sides. They stop the slate before the eaves because the eaves are Boeing, and the copper that they've put there instead is much lighter than the slate, and that was their recommendation.
Keep...
Yep.
Okay.
It will act also as a snow belt, which many of us are familiar with on our houses.
Pleasure of the board. Or any other questions on this first?
I move...
Wonderful.
I move that we designate $69,210.43 from the 1% fund to cover the remainder of the cost of repairing the roof.
Okay, we have a motion. Can we get a second? And then I do see some questions.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. I said Jan had your hand up. We'll go there first. Was there somebody up there, Bill?
No, I'm with you. I don't think so.
Jan, so if you just told us that you have a surplus, why wouldn't you take that money out of your surplus instead of the 1% money? Because I noticed on your chart that you attached for your report, it shows that you have 200 and some thousand set aside for Union Street, but you don't have anything set aside for the commitment you made of 100,000 for paving every year out of the 1% money.
I don't recommend using the fund balance surplus because this is like such a perfect capital expense, and the 1% fund is restricted to capital expenses, but the fund balance is not. I also don't recommend it because we got right under our floor of 15% in our fund balance last year, and the delinquent taxes coming in is going to assist us in getting above the floor, but we are nowhere close to the ceiling. So I think to stay in that healthy range, I wouldn't want to compromise the 1%, the fund balance by getting it right down to the floor again.
Right. And another benefit of using the local option tax for this capital project is that fund balance is much more flexible. So if there's like something that comes up that we have an emergency that requires funding or something, you know, if it weren't capital, we couldn't use whatever we had in the local option, but that fund balance would be there for us. So it's just kind of like trying to figure out the best courses for courses, I guess.
Right. But most of it can come out of the actual budget because you just told us what your number was as of today, and then you project it to be 121,000. So I would think you would use some of it out of the surplus that you know of, and then the rest out of 1%?
So I did speak with the town treasurer about this, and the $121,000 surplus in the operating, in the general fund, does not necessarily equate to $121,000 increase in the fund balance because all of those delinquent taxes had been carried as a liability, and they now become on the asset side. All of that stuff happens on the balance sheet. So the balance sheet does not move in the same direction by the same amount that the cash flow will.
Can I make a recommendation that when you do your report every other week, that you put in there that you have 100,000 already earmarked for paving every year that you voted, you only have the Union Street but not the paving one?
Gotcha.
So you don't forget.
That's a, that's a known grant match, not designated, is Union Street. I think I have a small concern about, a Select Board can make a vote, but they can't tie the hands of next year's Select Board as far as there's going to be $100,000 spent from the 1% fund on paving. They can't.
So if nobody makes a motion, it just keeps, it stays?
Or they have... I would assume they're going to, I would assume the board will make the same motion, and it will happen. Yep.
But a future board may not want to, so...
Other questions or discussion? None heard. We have a motion to use 69,210.43 from 1%. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? No one? Okay. Item seven, ordinance process discussion. Want to leave that? You want me to...
So last meeting, we started talking about looking at our ordinances and policies and... so, and making sure they're up to date and making sure that they're being followed, or if there's something that needs to be changed. Or if there's an ordinance that's been superseded, we, we have a binder and it's got the first section is all our ordinances, the second section is all our policies. And the third section is procedures. And so ordinances are the municipal version of a law. So there, when a city enacts a law, it's called an ordinance. When the state enacts it, called a law. So ordinances often cover things that are not covered by state law or where state law has left an opening for the municipality to tweak a law so it works better for them. Things that you will often see municipalities having ordinances for are land use, traffic, animal control, waste disposal, you know, kind of like the nitty gritty of running a town. And so I have last week, we, last meeting, we talked about ones that we clearly didn't need anymore, like the pool hall ordinance, which a little bit archaic, back in the time when people were worried about trouble in River City and sorry. And so that was the first one we chose to repeal. And it's a process. You have to give notice that you are making this change. You have to allow time for people to step up and say, oh no, we really do need for the benefit of public morals to have this pool hall ordinance. If no one objects during a certain time period, then as a matter of law, it will be repealed. If someone does object, then we have to have hearings. Which is, so, so anyway, there are companies that will do this and charge you a lot of money to do it and return to you a codification of your laws, or there are wonks like me who will do it in their spare time. And so that is what we're doing. Over the next few months, we are going to start looking at individual ordinances to see which ones are still relevant, which ones are relevant but need to be updated, and which ones are already covered somewhere else. For example, we have a separate sign ordinance on the books right now, but signs are now governed by our land use ordinances, which are a separate set of ordinances. So that sign one, you know, is subject to repeal, is a candidate for repeal. So we're going to do that. We are also going to be looking at our policies to make sure that we have policies in place for certain things. Whether we have been acting ad hoc without a policy, that maybe we need to create a policy. Whether there's policies that need to be tweaked to represent the current reality, maybe, you know, at the time the policy was passed, it was one reality. Now it's, you know, facts of change, fact on the ground of change, maybe we need to do that. So it's an ongoing process. It's not going to happen right away, especially with the ordinances, because there is that built-in appeal and review period. So just watch this channel for future announcements. Vicki?
Yeah.
Vicki Disorda. So it sounds like you're gonna go sit in a back room at the town office and go through these yourself?
I'm gonna sit at a desk in my house and go through them and then bring them to the select board to be discussed in open meeting.
So you'll be making all these decisions solely?
No, I will be bringing them to the select board to be discussed in open meeting.
Can you please say what your qualifications? Because it sounds like usually a legal entity does this.
So my qualifications are, I am a graduate of Vermont Law School, summa cum laude, 1996. I worked in private practice. I served as a judicial clerk for the Connecticut Supreme Court and for the Oregon Court of Appeals. I worked in private practice as an insurance defense lawyer, in which capacity I represented municipalities that were being sued. I then spent 12 years as a senior assistant attorney general for the state of Oregon Department of Justice in their appellate division, where I represented state agencies and municipalities in legislation, complex tort actions, and defense of criminal convictions.
So are you?
Licensed to practice in Oregon, Connecticut, and Washington, and before the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals.
But you're not registered to practice law in Vermont?
I was licensed to practice law in Vermont. I retired. This is not practicing law what I'm doing, but I certainly have the qualifications to do it.
Okay, well, my next question is that you know, as long as I've been participating and coming to all these things in town, like when the planning commission reviewed and revised the town plan and like we're doing the workbook now. These things have always been done in a public space, in a public meeting with public input. And I'm wondering why we're not following that, what seems like a general way we conduct municipal business in Brandon.
I'm gonna step in and say, I think it is. She just has the ordinance book that she's looking at that highlight ordinances that seem to be most outdated and not necessary. And once she sees an ordinance like that, the ordinance will come to the board to be done in public. Like we did discuss the one on the pool hall recently. And then even if the board, in discussing it with whatever public is here at the time, can either then make the decision to move forward with repealing the ordinance or not, that the public still has 44 days to have a petition to the board that they don't like an ordinance being repealed. So there's tons of safety in there for the public.
Are these ordinance available to the public? You say if people wanted to go in and see if there's something they would like to bring to the board's attention during this process?
I'll let Mr. Hopkins answer that because at this point, I believe it's all in one big book.
My, my understanding is there is one book. Many of them that are, are kind of frequently used are published on the town website, but they have definitely not all been scanned and published on the town website.
But if you'd like, I will bring the binder that I've been working on back to the town office. If you would like to come and sit and put posted notes on the ones that you think we need to look at and address.
It's not trying to be done as a secret. It's just trying to, we, we need someone to take a look and do it. We cannot put all five selectmen together to do that because that would be an illegal meeting. So one person looks and makes some choices and I've offered to assist her because I am the other retired person up here. That probably has a little time to, to sit and look at things too, but.
I would also note that if we hired a company to do this, none of this would be happening except when they wanted to change or repeal the ordinance. And then it would go through the legal process, which if you take a look at the select board packet, that process is in there and you can see how it works. But, you know, nothing of substance would happen without open discussion by the select board.
Can you define substance? I mean, are you, does that mean that you're free to change things that you don't consider of substance? Or is any change on the ordinance going to be publicly?
So changing punctuation may be substantive, may not be substantive. Changing words may be substantive, may not be substantive. But, you know, for example, let's say, let's say we had a sign ordinance and we didn't have a land, like currently we have a separate sign ordinance that's in this book. We also have the Blueos, which is the Brandon Land Use Ordinance. And the Blueos have a separate section for signs, which is newer than the sign ordinances in the book. So that sign ordinance in the book has been superseded by the land use ordinances. And so that would be subject to repeal. So I would bring it to the board and I'd say, here's this ordinance, it's been superseded, it's subject to repeal, and we'd go for the process for repealing. But let's say we didn't have the Blueos, no land use ordinances, and we had this sign ordinance. And I looked at the sign ordinance and the sign ordinance, let's say it was passed in 1955. And it addressed the types of signs that were allowed in town in 1955. And we looked at it, it's one that I would then bring to the board. I'd say, okay, we have the site ordinance. It was adopted in 1955. This is what it says. Are we happy with this? Or do we want to change it? And if we wanted to change it, it would be subject to full discussion by the board at a public meeting following this process that's in the packet.
How many ordinances are, are in the books?
I believe it's total of approximately 75 ordinances, policies, procedures, and resolutions in the book.
So ordinance is maybe 25.
Yeah, I think, I think the way that we should be thinking about this is Cecil is doing legwork and kind of initial review, just so we don't have five people duplicating efforts. But absolutely no changes are being made until it's brought before the entire select board. All Cecil's doing is saying, is flagging things.
So this pool hall ordinance was the catalyst for all of this?
No. The catalyst for this was the company approaching you? Vermont, yeah.
So when I was on the select board, I had two long-term projects I wanted to do. One was the rewriting of the town report format. And the other was organizing in some manner more cogent than alphabetical order, the town's ordinances, policies, and procedures. And through the VLCT organization, I was like basically like it was a solicitation that probably went to every town manager in Vermont that belongs to VLCT, right? By this company who does this, right? They do the ordinance review. They make sure that your ordinances don't conflict with current state law. They reorganize stuff in a sensible way and give you a, a bound volume and an online version for X price. And I brought that to the board as a possibility. And also as a possibility, I brought to the board that we could do it ourselves here, but it will take a long time in the, in the amount of time that we would have to dedicate it to it.
Thank you.
Barry?
Not to be redundant, but the point I was going to make Cecil already has, and Seth has as well. And I feel strongly that this process is far more engaging than would be the alternative of farming it out to what else would, what is also a common practice. So I think this, this direction is far more engaging and, and
And deeper.
Collaborative, I guess.
Yeah, I would hate to add another $30,000 into our budget just to have somebody else read our ordinances. That's my own. Brent Bueller, one more time.
Yeah, Brent Bueller. And, and I think Jeff moved to have it digitized so it's online, so that when.
That's part of the process.
So that when this is done, everybody will be able to access it easily and not come to the town.
That's, that's been a big pet peeve of mine that a lot of our stuff just isn't readily available, except in one big old book, that if we had something happened, you know.
And last, last summer, we had programs, no longer in existence, a higher ability with young people that were looking for job experience and they came and worked in the office. And we had one young person start going through and typing up some of these policies, just so they weren't photocopies of copies. And so a few of these have migrated, are migrating over, have been typed into a, into a digital format.
I, I think the reality is that we feel we're financially in a good spot. We feel as a board where we have a good grip on things at this point with the public. And it's a great time to look at ordinances that it may have been there for 50 to 80 years that do not pertain right now and start by cleaning some of those up. It's, it's not trying to do a big sweeping change on anything.
We have a question on Zoom from Trish Welch.
Okay, from whom?
Trish Welch.
Hi, Trish Welch. I would just like to personally thank Cecil for volunteering to do this work. I think she is more than qualified to be looking at these things. She has the town and legal experience to do it. And I commend the board for looking at ways to do this that do not require a lot of money. And it is all above board. Nothing changes until it comes before the board and the public for discussion. So thank you, Cecil, and thank you for the board for making this decision. I think it's the proper way to go about it.
Thank you for your comment. Additional comments on ordinance process discussion? Like boards all comfortable with the way we're doing it?
And I'm sure Cecil knows this, but all of us are happy to help.
Yep.
As one, a pair of people, not any more than that, so we're not violating open meetings.
Exactly.
As needed.
No more comment on that. Item eight, public comment and participation. Items not on the agenda. Dan Coolidge?
Back to the 1% fund. So you said that during the budget process, you guys voted to have 100,000 go towards paving. So that was in November, December, January, and then in March, you elected new select board members. So does that process for the budget committee, does that hold for this next budget? Or because you have a new board, you have to revote that 100,000 in? I just want to clarify it is all.
So because they made that vote during the budget writing process, we were able to go out for the paving bid earlier in the season and get more favorable bids and participation. So I would say that's a committed 100,000 to FY '26 paving, which is this summer.
I just wanted to clarify it once you said that when the board changes, it doesn't follow through. And I'm like, oh, then we might.
I don't mean it doesn't, I don't, I don't, a little small difference. I don't mean it like a board vote doesn't carry through when the next board is seated. I mean, a board vote can't stay ongoing. Yes.
I follow you. I just wanted to clarify.
Yep.
Other public comment? Okay. Who is it?
Keith Wickham.
Need to unmute him.
Oh, sorry, that's a cursor.
Okay.
I normally notice it.
No other public comment, any public comment, any public announcements before we adjourn? None seen.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, second. All in favor?
Aye.
No one? Thank you.
10:47.